Just one, two.
Can I touch it? Can I touch it? Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December Board of Education meeting. Can everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take a seat. Okay. As a tradition, to begin our December meeting, we have the, as you can see, the Choral Pride and the, I guess the Adelts are stood in the back. And then, so I am going to have Dr. Hale, the coordinator for Fine and Performing Arts, to introduce the groups.
Thank you, Ms. Chang, the Board of Education, and Dr. Rogers, for this opportunity. We've had a very busy few weeks in the music department. We actually just came back from Rochester. Many of our students, 30 students, performed in the All-State Ensembles this past weekend, along with three students who performed in the piano showcase, more than any other school district in the state of New York. Next month, we have 335 students performing at the Tila Center, grades K through 12, as all-county musicians. And coming up, actually immediately after that, the students you see in front of you right now will be performing at the International Barber Shop Society Midwinter Convention in San Antonio, Texas. Last year, at the Midwinter Convention, the students were invited to compete as well, and they received first place in their division. We're hoping for another great year this year. And they actually just performed yesterday at the Syosset Tree Lighting. So if you were there, you saw them there as well. So please join me in welcoming the sounds of the season today, brought to you by the Choral Pride and Adellet Group, conducted by Ms. Kristin Howell.
Hi, everyone. We are the Syosset Adelts, and we are so excited to be singing for you today. We're going to be singing "White Christmas."
And we want to wish everyone a happy and safe and healthy holiday season. Thank you. Thank you again for that wonderful performance, the Syosset High School Adelts and the Choral Pride. Let's give them another round of applause, please. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. The board will be making their way up to the stage to prepare for our Board of Education meeting. And then, for those of you who would like to make a graceful exit without joining the board, now is your moment to do it. Otherwise, give us a few minutes to set up. Thank you. Okay, the board is going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of minutes of the November 4th, 2024 Board Meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? And then, Dr. Rufo. Can we have the Treasures Report and Appropriations Adjustments, please?
Okay. As shown on the Treasures Report, the cash on hand for the month-end October 2024 was $79,340,782.38. It shows that bank balances for all cash accounts were reconciled to the book balances and were collateralized in accordance with the district's banking agreements and investment policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rufo. Can I have a motion for Treasures Report and Appropriations Adjustments, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and the next one. The Citizen Finance Committee met on November 6th. And from what I understand, Mr. Greco and Mr. Ostrick attended the meeting. Mr. Greco, would you like to give us an overview of the meeting?
Thank you. I'll try to keep this short. So the Finance Committee met again on November 6th. A portion of that meeting focused on foundation aid, in part because it was the day after the last board meeting when Dr. Rogers gave his presentation on foundation aid. The focus of the meeting was really about our insurance carrier, NISER. As you guys may remember, there was a downgrade by a rating agency earlier in this year. So the committee discussed that downgrade, the reasons for it, and really our options generally. And that discussion will continue in the future at our next meeting and maybe beyond. And we'll report back to the board if and when the committee has something to recommend.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greco. And the next agenda item will be Superintendent's Report. So, Dr. Rogers?
Thank you. We have several items on the agenda for my report. I'm going to start with Ms. Morgenstern, who is a fairly recent addition to the cabinet, but is responsible for our residency and registration office. And I know the board is interested in the topic of residency. Our obligation is to make sure that the services of the Syosset School District go to those students who legitimately are entitled to them because they are residents of the school district. This is a highly regulated area of our operations. So we are responsible not only to follow the education law, but the Attorney General scrutinizes school districts closely as well. So a lot of the decisions and policies that we have in place are crafted in order to remain scrupulously in alignment with both the law and decisions of the Attorney General in terms of how school districts go through, first of all, the registration process and then the residency verification process. So, Ms. Morgenstern, thank you. Ms. Morgenstern, I don't think your microphone is on, so...
Oh, there you go. Good evening, and thank you to the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, for the opportunity to speak regarding residency. One of my roles as the Executive Director of Human Resources is to oversee the residency office. The residency department consists of two functions. There is the Registration Department and also the Residency Department. The Residency Department handles the actual application enrollment process and maintains student records, while the Residency Department focuses on verifying and managing the residency status of students within the district. Both departments work together to ensure that students are eligible to attend schools within the district and have all the necessary documentation. New York State Education Law 3202 and the District Residency Policy 5150, which follows education law, states, residency means domicile, which requires both one's physical presence as an inhabitant of the district and an intent to reside in the district. A child's resident is presumed to be that of his or her parent or the person in parental relationship. School districts are required to provide free instruction only to district residents who are over the age of five, under the age of 21, and have not received a high school diploma and resides within the district. All children must be residents of the school district in order to attend. A school district must enroll a child when a parent, person in parental relationship, or child requests enrollment. The child will begin attendance the next school day or as soon as practicable. By law, the district must enroll the student within 24 hours. If there is insufficient documentation to support residency, the student is unenrolled from the school district after the third day. So how does the district ensure that new entrants are verified residents? The district has registration procedures and requirements. So new entrants must complete the online application. They must complete the registration process in person with a district registrar, and that person must be the parent or guardian. They must bring three original proofs of residency documents. They must provide proof of a child's age, which can be either the original birth certificate, a baptismal record, or passport. They must provide proof of immunization. If they provide a deed or a mortgage, we verify those deeds and mortgages through Nassau County. And if they provide a lease, we verify by contacting the landlord. In accordance with New York State Code Rules and Regulation, District Policy 5150 lists supportive documents in establishing residency within the district. A parent or a guardian must submit, again, three proofs of residency documentation. They can choose from either one from column A and then two from column B, or from column B, they can choose any three. So for example, if they have a lease, which is from column A, they must provide two additional forms of residency documentation, which can be a pay stub or utility bill. If they choose just from column B, they can go down the list, choose a pay stub, a tax form, or utility bill. Types of residency proofs that can be used to establish residency are affidavits as well. There's a homeowner or a leaseholder affidavit that goes along with the resident affidavit. So they both go together. The homeowner or leaseholder affidavit lists the people living at the address and their relationship to the homeowner/leaseholder. And the resident affidavit lists the names of people living in their home. There's also a parent and custodial affidavit. And again, those two go together. In the parent affidavit, the parent relinquishes all custody, control, and support for their student, who is living with a guardian. In the custodial affidavit, the guardian assumes total and permanent custody, control, and responsibility of all children, including educational, medical decisions, and financial support. If a family is scheduled to become a resident by purchasing a Syosset residence within 45 calendar days from the start of the school year, they may register their child prior to establishing residency. The non-resident must pay 2/10 of the yearly tuition set by the commissioner for non-resident students. The district also verifies residency through investigations when there are questions of a student's residency that arise. The district has authority to verify residency, to investigate residency inconsistencies, and to exclude non-residents. The process for identifying and excluding non-residents are through investigations, which we have a private investigation firm that conducts surveillances and home visits. We also have residency meetings, final determination of non-residents, the exclusions, and also the appeals. So what prompts an investigation inquiry? Return or forwarded mail can prompt an investigation inquiry. Anonymous calls or emails. Lease expirations, which we review every month. Home sale records, if a student is still in attendance. Residency reverification that we have. A parent or a guardian of a student who is in fifth or eighth grade must complete a residency reverification prior to entering middle school and high school. If a student has chronic absenteeism or is constantly late. Registration duplicates. If more than one resident enrolling a child at a school address. And we also do an audit review of our affidavits. So here's some data in regards to our residency that we've had. Last year, we had total investigations of 39 households, which is equivalent to 70... Last year, we had total investigations of 39 households, which is equivalent to 72 students. Out of those 72 students, 42 were confirmed to be in district and 30 were excluded. This year, our total investigations are 28 households, approximately 39 students. We have confirmed 18 to be in district thus far. Four, we have excluded, and so far, we have 17 still open. So, what's the role of the school district? The role of the school district residency is to verify residency versus the Town of Oyster Bay's role, which is to enforce building codes. School districts must educate students physically residing in the district. As stated before in my earlier slides, the district has the authority to verify residency, investigate inconsistencies, and also exclude non-residents. As per the appeal of Morales, the commissioner has held that a school district cannot determine non-residency status because multiple families live in a home that is out of compliance with a town's residential zoning rules. The commissioner has held that a school district cannot discriminate against students in unpermitted housing. Local governments are solely responsible for enforcing building and housing codes. That's where the Town of Oyster Bay comes in. The Town of Oyster Bay has a code enforcement bureau that enforces zoning, housing, public safety rules and regulations, including residential zonings. They handle citizens' requests through the code enforcement bureau. They handle residential violations. Examples of residential violations may be if a person is using a property zone for a single-family residence as a multifamily dwelling without rezoning or obtaining variances or permits. This is illegal. If they're exceeding the allowed number of occupants for a residential property. If a multifamily dwelling must meet, I'm sorry, multifamily dwellings must meet specific safety standards, including fire exits, ventilation, and occupancy limits. Unauthorized conversions may not comply, posting safety risks. Complaints can be filed directly with the Town of Oyster Bay's Code Enforcement Bureau through an investigation form, which is a hyperlink on my presentation, or by calling, or you can use the QR code to go to their website. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgenstern, for your presentation. It's very comprehensive and thorough. I have a quick question. On the page that says, let me see, there's a page that gives you the address, the email address for the residents to email what prompts an investigation inquiry, and it also says that anonymous calls. And can you just quickly provide the number for the residents to call? Or is that, you know, you can update it on the presentation?
I can update it on the presentation, but you can also call, I said, 516-364-5691.
5691. So, it's 516-364-5691. Okay. Great. And then, the presentation is going to be posted. Out of today's presentation, the PowerPoints will be posted on the district website. So, if any residents wants to take a closer look at the presentation, the PowerPoint will be posted. Okay. And now, are there any questions from the board for Ms. Morgenstern, and Mr. Ostrick, and then Mr. Greco?
So, thank you for the presentation. I can tell, because I'm thinking back, because this is an issue I've followed closely for a number of years. These numbers, Dr. Rogers, seem like they are higher than my recent memory. I think that's probably a credit to you getting after it, which is something that I think certainly I have been wanting us to make sure that we're documenting and doing the things that we can do. And Ms. Morgenstern, I'm thankful that you seem to be taking it personally and very seriously. So, thank you for your hard work. Dr. Rogers, do I have my recollection right?
You do indeed. We've had more residency investigations these past two years and more exclusions resulting therefrom. And like you, I credit it to Ms. Morgenstern's dogged efforts.
Mr. Greco?
Thank you, Ms. Morgenstern. That was, as Ms. Chang said, comprehensive and very impressive. And, you know, I'm sure you know how we feel up here about the residency issue. And I think your work thus far has been stellar. So, I know we like to talk about residency in the context of being about money. And of course, it is, right? It's our tax dollars that are not meant for non-residents. But I also like to think about it in the fact that our schools are experiencing some enrollment pressure. And as we've talked about at length during the facilities discussions, that pressure may and probably will increase as the bubble moves through the schools. So, you know, with that in mind, with the importance of this issue, I guess my question to you is, what do you need from us? Like, what can the board do to help you with this work?
And I appreciate that. I have a wonderful staff also that is behind me. And what the board can do is, as you have been doing, reviewing the policy and strengthening the policy as it is. That's a really good step in the right direction.
Dr. Park?
Thank you for your presentation. And going along with Mr. Greco's question, what can we do as a resident? What can we do to help you? We don't want to just give you a call. We don't want to bombard you with telephone calls. What specific things do you need from the residents that will help you do your work and not overburden you?
I guess by using the email in regards to the anonymous, being really specific in what you were noticing would help me to quickly and to more accurately determine non-residency. So, if there is more detail to the anonymous call, the anonymous email, that would be more helpful. Not just a student stopping at a bus stop, but a little bit more detail.
So, that's what I was worried about. Just a random call to say, oh, I saw a bunch of kids at the stop. You know, I saw a lot of kids being dropped off at this location, and they're all going in there. That's information, but that doesn't necessarily help you. It just actually burdens you with more information.
Yeah. It's a little bit more, if they're willing to, I know they would like it to be anonymous, and we will keep it anonymous in our department. If they don't mind us reaching out and touching base and just getting a little bit more detail, that would help us a lot.
Yeah, and I just wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Greco was saying. In addition to tightening the policy, are there resource constraints that you're facing? Because from my point of view, this is an excellent use of incremental resources of ours. So, if that's a constraint, please let us know.
I will.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Morgenstern, for your presentation again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I have several things to update the board on. I'll just wait for the presentation to go full screen. The first thing I want to talk about is the project called Propel New York. And this is a project that was started several years ago. We became aware of it not too long ago. We were asked by the folks who are working on Propel New York to have a meeting so that they could inform us of what's going on. Their obligation is to let the community know what is going on. So, we're one of, obviously, the entities in the community. This is a new electric transmission project. I was, again, unaware of it until they reached out to us. So, we had a preliminary meeting with them just so that we could understand what was going on and understand who the right points of contact would be going forward. The project is to create a number of buried underground electricity transmission cables throughout Nassau County and a little bit into Suffolk County. Their point is that it will relieve congestion in the grid. And again, I'm not making this presentation to the board because I'm a proponent or opponent of the project. I just want to make sure that I inform the board of this fairly significant project that's taking place and let the board know and the public know what we're doing to keep an eye on it. So, in Syosset specifically, there are two lines, two separate lines that will run through the community. I'll have another slide that goes to a little more detail on that. Where they are right now is they're currently in the permitting process. They believe that the permitting process will be finalized in the end of 2026 and that they will have all of their permits in place. But in the meantime, they are reaching out to local governments, entities like schools, to let us know what they're working on as they go through the permitting process. Then, construction would begin in 2026 and go through the year 2030, when the lines would be energized and they would feed into the grid. So, this is a more detailed map of the routes that they are currently projecting through Syosset. Of note, the one route goes through the center of the village by the train station along Cold Spring Road and then out Syosset-Woodbury Road. The other route that comes up from the south will go through the south part of the school district and along Robbins Lane, including in front of Robbins Lane Elementary School. So, they explain the construction process, which involves, for the most part, trenching roads and then dropping the transmission lines into the trench and then filling the trenches back in. They explain that this would be the kind of thing that they would move through, you know, follow the trenching down the road. And they also said that there will be places where they do horizontal drilling so that they don't have to do any trenching at all. So, we immediately identified a handful of concerns. We're going to work with a consultant. My recommendation to the board is that you direct us to work with a consultant to see if there are other concerns that we should have. But obvious immediate concerns would be the disruption to busing operations or access to the school district property while there's construction going on in front of the property. Any potential utility interruptions that we might experience, the school building losing power or internet during the school day. And then, obviously, we don't have any expertise in underground high-power transmission lines. So, we would want to seek some external expertise to advise us. So, as we did in the past when there was a large project on the former Sierra Wire Plant that turned into the Amazon Warehouse, we sought some outside expertise to advise us. Would advise that we do similarly now. We are, we have asked the environmental consultant who advised us on the Sierra Wire Amazon project if they had expertise in this area. They feel they do not. So, they're going to try and help us identify a consultant that would have specific expertise in this area. And once we work with the consultant, if we develop other concerns or safety issues that we need to bring to the board, we'll have that conversation at some point in the future. But where we are right now is still gathering information. Do you want to take any questions on this before I move on to the next topic?
When we're investigating, can we find out if there have been similar projects and how many of them have been time overrun? And what that time overrun? I'm less concerned about the cost than I am about the time. And number two, in terms of our ability to affect the order in which this gets done, in other words, doing the things that are going to affect the school district first, do we have any sense of whether or not we're going to have any potential say or who the right people are to get in touch with, where we can get the right say to get done first?
I think it's a great question. One of the questions I asked was more of an operational nature, and that was, to the extent that it might be disrupting to our busing operations, if they could do that work over the summer, it would have less impact to us. They seemed amenable to those kinds of suggestions. I don't have a good answer to your question about affecting the overall order of work. And we're working with Ms. Tondo, Carrie Ann Tondo, our attorney, who has expertise in these areas. And there may be an opportunity for us to comment on the project at some point in the future. And so, I would think that that suggestion would be incorporated into our comments.
Ms. Epperson?
Along the lines of what Jack said with timing and different things with our construction projects, it's just something to consider also, as we try to do them in the summer as well. So, we just have to kind of be on top of this so we can make sure that we get done what the district needs. So, I don't know how that goes into planning or how much we can work together. It seems like it's still in the permit process, so it's early, but it's just something to be aware of, as we are doing a big construction as well.
Yes. Certainly, we all know that Southwoods Road is a very constrained access point for the high school, and it's very crowded mornings and afternoons. And the substation that would be connected is on the corner of Southwoods Road and Syosset-Woodbury Road. So, that, the impact to Southwoods Road will be significant for the school district whenever it does occur.
Mr. Rotolo?
Thank you. Dr. Rogers, I do agree with the hiring our environmental consultant, which we did before for Sierra Wire. We need somebody that's going to represent our interests, that has a deep understanding of this. Also, is there any direct benefit to the school having these lines here?
I don't want to speak specifically for them. I'd be happy to ask them the question. They're more of a 20,000-foot view. They said that the electrical grid does not have enough capacity for all of the users of the grid and that this would relieve some of the congestion on the grid. So, I suppose indirectly, we would experience maybe less concerns about power. But generally, our power interruptions have not been because the grid is taxed, but they've been because of some sort of a power interruption, a tree falling, or something like that.
One more question. Would this then have anything to do with additional power for future electric busing?
There's no question that, so, right now, the, let me take one step back. There are some surveys that are going on from the utilities to try and determine how much additional electrical capacity would be needed for school districts if there were to be a conversion to electric buses in the future. So, certainly, that's a consideration, and certainly, there's a fairly significant power need. The advantage to, one advantage of electric buses is that they would be charged overnight when the grid is experiencing less pressure. On the other hand, it's still going to be a large increase in the grid. So, I'm just imagining, we didn't have this conversation with them, but I'm imagining that relieving congestion on the grid would enable more charging capacity at some point.
Okay. Are there any more, Mr. Ostrick?
Just one last question. I know that some of the local utility assets that are within our district are subject to part of the county assessment. Is there any chance that these additional improvements will be added to that assessment in terms of diversifying revenue?
It's a very good question. There are some utility, above-ground utility transmission lines right now that we get pilot payments for, payments in lieu of taxes. And one of the questions that the attorney, that our attorney has is exactly the question you've asked, is is there the ability to tax this asset? And if so, what's the mechanism?
Thank you. And I just want to get a consensus from the board to hire an environmental consultant to do the studies. Okay? Great. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. And then you'll let us know whatever the finding is. Thank you.
So, next, I'm going to ask Dr. Ruffo to just report on foundation aid. And if you don't mind, I'll advance the slides for you. And...
Thank you. So, at our last meeting, Dr. Rogers gave a little bit of a background on this, on foundation aid, and we were anticipating the report to be released by the Rockefeller Institute, and it was released on December 2nd. And the report contains a variety of recommendations on foundation aid, formula changes, as well as other... as other changes. And just a few steps back, Foundation Aid, the Foundation Aid formula is the current method used by New York State to allocate the largest proportion of state education resources to school districts. It was created in 2007 to consolidate many different funding streams and aids into one formula. So the Foundation Aid formula works to distribute funds based on specific information about school districts, including enrollment, student demographics, expected local contribution, and other factors. Unfortunately, in many cases, the current formula uses old or outdated statistics. And this study was an attempt to update and revise those, that formula, so that the state could better support their requirements to provide a sound, basic education for every, for every student. So the big question that we had when the report was released is what does this mean for Syossett? And at this time, the impact for individual districts can't be determined. Our state education associations are combing through this 300-plus-page report and all of the tables and appendices, and will be, we're going through it as well. And we anticipate more information in the coming weeks. And while we don't know which of the provisions or the recommendations will move forward, the report does emphasize the importance of taking a multi-year approach to phasing in any of the potential changes. And just wanted to provide some context for finance, finance, sorry, Foundation Aid in Syossett. And as you can see from the chart, it accounts overall for about 8% of our total revenue. But that, for us, means about $23 million. And you can see, over the last couple of years, we've had a substantial increase in Foundation Aid. So there are several recommended, recommended changes to the aid. Overall, the most definitive, they were very definitive in the acknowledgement that the foundation formula has to change. And so they recommended a variety of changes in different aspects of the formula. The first is, they recommended calculating the base aid by averaging the spending of the top 50% of performing districts. And that seems to make sense to model funding based on successful districts. But without data, additional data on the location of those districts or any other information, it's difficult to determine how that would impact us. The current foundation formula applies weightings based on the number of students in different categories. So for example, special education students, English language learners, they receive additional weightings to account for additional services or resources that these students may need. The report suggests a more flexible model that recognizes the different service levels that students may have and the intensity of the services that students may need. They also recommend in the report that these should be funded as a separate formula and not be folded up into Foundation Aid. One of the other measures in Foundation Aid is poverty. And currently, the Foundation Aid formula uses the proportion of students receiving free and reduced-price lunch. And the report recommends moving towards the more current federal indicator called the SAIP, which stands for Small Area Income and Poverty Estimate. And this is considered a more stable and accurate measure of poverty than free and reduced-price lunch, which is subject to participation of students in the program. There are also recommendations on the calculation for expected local minimum contribution, or basically, the way that the state calculates school district wealth and how that wealth level impacts how much school districts are able to fund locally with their local resources rather than the state. And currently, wealth factors use a combination of income and property wealth, and the report suggests a more or greater customization of that formula for districts. The report also recommends moving away from the one-year CPI and towards a more regional, multi-year blended average. So the blended average CPI provides, I guess, smoothing, we could say, and predictability. But in years of high inflation that we've had recently, it, it wouldn't necessarily favorably impact districts. It also suggests updating the regional cost index to make it more locally specific. The report suggests phasing out of flat grants and save harmless. Save harmless means that districts do not get less money than the prior year's funding, and a flat grant provides a minimum level of funding per pupil. And unlike Syossett over the years, which has experienced enrollment increases, many districts across the state have seen enrollment decreases. And the thinking is that districts experiencing enrollment declines should not necessarily be receiving the same level of funding. They also recommend the elimination of set-asides. So rather than giving districts money and telling them how some of it must be spent, they'd rather convert that money into a separate funding stream that is directly tied to the initiative that the state wants to implement. They also discussed and recommended a change to reserve funds. So currently, school districts are allowed to retain about 4% in fund balance. And we use that as a, oh, I jumped ahead, as a buffer against unforeseen circumstances. And currently, we're allowed to retain about 4%. And the report recommends increasing that limit to 10%. It would, however, also require school districts to use those funds to cushion the loss of aid over a five-year period. In addition to Foundation Aid changes, the report recommends several other initiatives. They recommend additional funding for mental health initiatives for students. And they recommend that the state should not only support the provision of mental health services, but also help grow the access to the services in school districts and sustain a model that helps ensure a comprehensive and coordinated approach. They added, suggested a provision for growth aid to provide more immediate funding for districts that experience an unusual surge in enrollment or in the counts of ELL students or students with disability. This would provide those districts with funding in the same year that they are experiencing the growth. It's called growth aid. They recommend capping STAR benefits at the current level, and going forward, any increases in STAR can be forwarded directly to school districts. It also provides for the funding of electric bus conversions. So New York State Institute a mandate that school districts transition entirely to electric school buses by 2035. And starting in 2027, all new school buses must be zero-emission vehicles. So whether you contract out for buses like we do or own your own, school districts face considerable cost increases from this policy. And the report recommends that New York State fully underwrite the costs of this initiative for school districts. So again, we can't determine which of these recommendations will be adopted, but we will receive the governor's budget in January, and that should give us some indication of the direction of some of these initiatives.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. I'm just going to wrap a little bit of context around this presentation because we talked about this in November. And what I shared with the board in November is my worry that the state is moving into posture of more fiscal austerity for school districts. When I started my career, there was a period where the state would annually cut funding to school districts, and then the legislature would be forced to restore that funding. And I know there are a lot of people in the audience tonight because you're worried that a school district might be facing a threat of one kind or another. The one thing I am sure of is that a loss of funding would absolutely be the sort of thing that would jeopardize program. So that's why it is so important for us to stay focused on what the state is doing for Foundation Aid. So part of the context for the early part of my career, when there were annual cuts in school aid that the legislature has, had to restore, was that the state's fiscal condition was not particularly good, and all of the entities that the state underwrote, underwrote the funding for were all experiencing cuts. I told the board in November that I didn't think that that pretext for cutting state aid existed this year because the state's finances are actually very good. And there have been two more pieces of information that have come out since we met in November, the last two bullets on this slide. The state's Division of Budget does a mid-year update. That mid-year update doesn't capture what has happened in the last month and a half with the stock market, which obviously is strengthening the state's fiscal position even more. And the state's sitting on one of the highest levels of reserves that it has ever had. So I think the rationale for reducing state aid is not there, but the worry is that the governor's rhetoric at the end of this last budget cycle, which would be April of 2024, was strongly suggesting that there would be cuts to school aid in the coming year. And in fact, that was the pretext for this report, and it was even something that was mentioned by the commissioner in offering a rationale for regionalization, which we'll talk about in a second. So it is not my own worry that the state was anticipating cuts in school aid. It was a worry of heads of agencies as well. So I'm encouraged to see that the state's finances are in good shape, and I am hopeful that the governor doesn't propose cuts to schools. But we will be prepared to act vigorously if there is a reduction in support for our schools, because, as I said earlier, that would have direct and immediate impact on not just our ability to deliver program, but all schools' ability to deliver program. So in addition to the positive developments of the state's fiscal condition, there was one positive development rhetorically. So the governor has been saying that she's observing the loss in enrollment that most school districts are experiencing, and was saying that she didn't want to pay for empty seats. In school aid jargon, that means not paying for something called save harmless, a provision that means you don't get any less aid in the current year than you got in the previous year, even if your enrollment went down slightly. But the governor, just last week, announced that she no longer is interested in eliminating that provision called hold harmless or save harmless. So I think that's an encouraging first step. It doesn't affect us because we've not been losing enrollment, we've been gaining enrollment. So for all the reasons that I shared with the board last month, I think Syossett needs to see its state aid continue to grow because our needs and our justification for that state aid continues to grow as well. So this is something that we're going to, again, keep a very close eye on, and happy to take questions from the board on Foundation Aid.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo and Dr. Rogers for the presentation, and thank you for consolidating 300-plus pages into six slides. And certainly, you know, I am hoping that they would take most of the recommendations, that the state would take most of the recommendations, if not all, because all these will be benefiting all the districts, the mental health, growth aid, and STAR, and electric buses. So, okay, are there any questions from the board? Ms. Malkov?
Thank you so much for consolidating it because as we waded through all the report, it was very detailed and a lot. So the Foundation Aid is obviously very important, and that we want to, you know, maximize whatever we can get. Is there anything that we can do or should be doing at this period in time to, to help increase our chances of getting more Foundation Aid?
So the, the next steps in the process are, the governor will propose her executive budget proposal on January 21. So I don't think that there is much we can do to influence the development of that proposal directly. That will be put together by her Division of Budget, and then it will be released. But her proposal will not be the final word, but it will set the floor for how much total funding will be available. And then we will look at it as we did last year. Last year, the governor proposed cutting Syossett about $200,000. So that would have been a significant cut for us. So we will watch closely again to see what the governor proposes for us and for schools more generally. And that will be the point at which we start to advocate with our legislators. We have three local legislators in the Assembly, two in the Senate, who represent fairly significant portions of Syossett. We'll start to encourage them to make restorations or additions to the governor's budget. The deadline for having a budget in place is April 1st because the state's fiscal year ends on March 31st. Typically, what will happen is both houses of the legislature will create what are called conference committees, and those conference committees will begin to hammer out the details of the budget. And one of the most important things will be whether they decide to spend more aggregate money than the governor has proposed spending. So that typically is what happens. And so we'll want to be influential in how that additional new money is directed, first towards education, and then beyond that, towards Syossett. So we, I, again, in the early 90s, it was a common thing for school districts, particularly Long Island school districts, to go to Albany to lobby their legislators. And I was on the receiving end of a lot of that lobbying. And we've fallen out of that habit because it hasn't been necessary. But I worry, if we're going back into a period where that becomes necessary to advocate for ourselves, that we've, we've lost our mojo, and we need to, you know, go back and figure out how to be successful at doing that.
Mr. Greco?
Dr. Ruffo, this one's, I think, for you. You mentioned in your summary, the fund balance limit potentially being increased to 10% from 4%, but that you would have to spend out over five years. How would that work in practice? If you don't know, I mean, obviously, it's, it seems a little crazy to me that they have that restriction.
I'm not sure exactly how it would work in practice, and I don't think the intent is to use all of it. I think it's, it's dependent on if you have a reduction in state aid, in Foundation Aid as a result of changes.
Mr. Rotolo?
Thank you, Ms. Chang. I guess my question piggybacks a little on your answer, Dr. Rogers, and also on Susan's, is that what can the board, what action can the board do to be proactive rather than reactive? And also, the community in anticipation that these things are on the table, and obviously, we don't want our, it took us a long time even for our history on that chart, that we were short the Foundation Aid for many years, that we legally were entitled to. So I feel like we've made progress, so I don't want to go backwards. But I, I feel like the board is proactive, and I think so is our community, on what we can do ahead of time. So anything we could do to be proactive is my point.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, and what we're seeing tonight is that we have a very engaged and enthusiastic community, and we may need that energy when we get into the state budget negotiations to make sure that Syossett gets the attention that it needs in this aid process. So I'm encouraged to see how much of our community is engaged in following these important issues.
Excuse me, this is the board's meeting in public, so we do not engage the audience during this time, and then the audience will get this chance to speak during Audience to the Public. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right, Dr. Rogers? Okay, Dr. Rogers, you want to move on to regionalization?
Are you ready for me to move on? So, I want to talk a little bit about regionalization.
Hi, so I still have some questions about Foundation Aid. Dr. Ruffo, the chart that you showed earlier about the dollars of Foundation Aid, do we have a sense of what that is as a percent of total revenue over time? I can see the number is lower, but obviously, our budget was lower. Do we have a sense that it was 5%, 8%? You know, how, what? You know, how, what?
Yeah, I want to say that I don't have a, we had a time when overall state aid was below 10%. Just if that gives you some, more like eight and nine, total state aid. So foundation aid makes, is the biggest component of that. That's as close as I can get to you at the moment.
And then, Dr. Rogers, just a macro level question. So this report is new, right? But I'm sure the advocacy agencies, the think tanks, et cetera, are all going through their calculations about what the total cost of this rewrite of the foundation aid formula is. Do we have any early feedback that, you know, the recommendation is going to lead to foundation aid number that's going to triple, that's going to halve? I mean, I assume they're running through a bunch of systematic estimates, but if the number between the buses and everything else is going to be 3x the foundation aid that it states currently giving out, that's going to run into some difficulty anywhere, no matter what we lobby on.
Correct. I think it's unlikely that the state is going to accept all of the recommendations that are in the report. Just the, the recommendation on electric buses alone will be a stunning number. So I think what the state is likely to do, the governor's office is likely to do, is they're going to cherry pick through some of the recommendations. Certainly, they'll want to update some of the data that's in there around student wealth and poverty, that sort of thing. How they change the calculations of the formula, what gets multiplied against what, is anyone's guess. So I don't think that any of the entities that watch these things closely are able to model the costs, because there isn't enough information disclosed here. So I think what is most likely to happen is that we, we, everyone, we, is going to have to wait and see what the governor's office does before we'll then be able to react.
So I think that's a really important point, which is, you know your way around Albany. You know where the pressure points are. You know where the right phone calls to make are, and I'm hoping that you know when to turn folks loose. So when that happens, I think it's important that we're really explicit about what we need to do, what folks out there need to do, and how to get that executed, so that we can be the most effective in targeting those specific things that the recommendations are going to fall on. Because just reading this list, there's no way they can accept all of them.
So obviously, we've heard a lot of concerns about regionalization. I've put those concerns on the left-hand side of this slide. Things, worry about a countywide school district, worried that the BOSI superintendent would be empowered to make decisions on our behalf, worried that the initiative could force mergers between school districts, or force a district to accept non-resident students, worries that school districts might have to pool shared resources. So the State Education Department has heard those worries as well, and they've put a lot of information on their website that is an attempt, their attempt, to dispel those worries. So we're...
Well, excuse me, excuse me. Okay, I just want to repeat something. No, excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, I just want to make a point clear to the audience. I just want to make something clear to the audience. This is the board's meeting in public. If the board cannot conduct its business in public, we'll have to take it to a different location. So please respect the board's business in public. Okay?
All right.
All right.
So...
Dr. Rogers, please go ahead. If you guys, let, let's listen to the presentation first. Okay, this is the order that we are going to take, and the audience will have a chance to speak later, but right now, it's Dr. Rogers' time to present on regionalization.
So the board has had two red lines from the very beginning. Any initiative that would erode local control, the board would oppose. So that would be forced tuition of non-resident students, forced mergers, expanded authority for the BOSI superintendent. The board has also said that they would oppose anything that redirected local resources. That's anything that carves away at our program, regionalizes our resources, creates pools or sharing. And those two red line principles address everything that I've heard members of the community express as concerns about regionalization. But they do more than that, because as we've just been talking about, things in Albany happen, go away, come back, happen, change names, come back. The regionalization itself, part of the reason why it has generated so much worry is because it is really vague. And so if you oppose something vague, the opposite of vague is also vague. So we have been very clear about what we oppose, so that no matter how it reconstitutes itself in some future initiative from Albany, we have already established the things that we are opposed to and will remain opposed to, whether they're named regionalization, or their name shared something in the future, or however they might resurrect themselves. So we've been consistent in opposing all of the things that might lead to the concerns that we've heard from the community. So there was an important development today, as we knew there would be. The Board of Regents met in Albany. I watched the board's meeting as it discussed regionalization, and I'll share for the board, obviously, the public, the developments from today's meeting. So the two most significant developments are that the board adopted, their board, the Board of Regents, adopted an amended version of the regionalization regulation that has two provisions. The first is, it created a new section at the end that is an opt-out provision. It says a school district may elect not to participate in the development of a regionalization plan. The second thing is that it changed the language in the regulation that said that the BOSI superintendent or the State Education Department could compel a school district to do something that is in the plan. So it is notable to me that they got rid of the word compel, and they replaced it with the word request, and it is particularly notable that the department, in its proposal, removed its own authority, not just the authority of the BOSI superintendent. So in the provision that allows school districts to opt out, it says that you need to consult with the Board of Education first, and then after consulting with the Board of Education, you have to send a letter to the State Education Department to opt out no later than January 15. So this was adopted at 2:45 this afternoon, and now, six, seven hours later, we're having the conversation with the Board of Education. So there was a lot of discussion between the Regents and the Commissioner of the State Education Department, the Deputy Commissioner and the Assistant Commissioner, and I'll give you some of the flavor of that conversation. So the Deputy Commissioner, Jeff Madison, Dr. Madison, said, "We won't approve any plan that does not include sign-off from every district listed in the plan." So he was addressing the concern that a school district might opt out of the plan and somehow appear in the plan with some sort of an obligation to be part of regionalization. So he'd said that they, the department, the state ed department, won't approve any plan that has any district referenced in it if that district has not approved whatever they were referred to. Our Regent for Long Island is Regent Roger Tillis. He represents the entire island. He asked the question, some people back home will ask, if they opt out of the planning process, is there any way they can involuntarily be made part of the plan itself? Assistant Commissioner Frank responded, "No, we've put forward our views on regulation, that, we put forward our views on our regulation, the Department and the Regents' regulation, in public and on our website. There have been these comments that only regulations are enforceable, but courts have held us accountable for statements and position that we put in public, so everyone should be secure in that." That was my attempt at typing very quickly as he was speaking. So when the Regents do a regulation, they have a cover memo that precedes the actual language of the regulation. There's obviously some explanation of what they're trying to do. And then for this one, because there was a comment period, they collected all of the comments, and they responded to the comments. So I want to just share some of the things that I think are salient to the points that have been raised as concerns by our community. First, in the memo, it says, "The proposed amendment does not mandate reorganization, mergers, or consolidations, nor does it require school district to engage in specific activities under the regionalization plan." In the final plan, participating school districts are only required to implement activities they have agreed to. And they said, "The regionalization process is voluntary. The department has added a provision, the one that I just spoke about, allowing school districts who do not wish to participate, to indicate such in writing to the department." They also went through the comments that came from the public. They said they had 9,500 comments, and they grouped the comments together and then responded them, responded to them. I realize that this is too small to read. Part of putting this here is so that when we put this online, it will be available to the whole community. So I did turn some words here red, I'm going to read those. It says, "No school district can be identified against their will as a participant in any activities identified in the regionalization plan." And that's what Deputy Commissioner said, they would not approve any plan that had a district that was identified against their will. "The regionalization plan may not force a school district to educate out-of-district students without their consent or permission." And since school districts are not required to participate in regionalization plans, there can be no effect on their district. So the point of all of these is the department was trying to respond to questions about what would happen if a school district opted out of the regionalization plan, as they are now permitted to do by the new language in Section 124-2.8. So I know the board is probably going to ask me questions, and the board has a discussion planned. I'm happy to respond to your thoughts and questions as best I can.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, and thank you to the audience for seeing through the entire presentation of regionalization. And then, so the board is going to move up the, the discussion item, regionalization, to now instead of later. And then, so, Dr. Rogers, it's from the presentation, can you please tell us when we are opting out of all these, opting out of the planning process as well as the implementation itself? What do you see as something that the board should, anything that the board should know, you know, when we do this?
I think there has been concern that the opt-out provision that the department is offering may not be comprehensive enough, and I think with all of the statements that they made today, they were trying very hard to assure school districts that if they took advantage of the opt-out option, that it would be a complete and permanent opt-out.
All right, so with that, it sounds to me that it would be, I, I am for opting out of the, the planning process as well as the implementation itself. I don't know how the board feels about it, so, you know, I'm happy to, you know, anyone wants to speak about it, of course, and then I know Mr. Greco has his hand up for a while, so Mr. Greco.
I'm right next to you, I don't need to have my hand up for a while. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, for the presentation. I, I know it, it had a quick turnaround after today's Regents' meeting. And I only have a few brief, brief thoughts. So we said at our last meeting, and you, you distilled it today in your two red lines, but I, I think about it in terms of, obviously, we're sticking to opposing the undermining of local control. We're, we're opposing redistribution of taxpayer funds or other, to other jurisdictions. The compelled partnerships, that are not in our interest, and of course, we're opposing mergers. So let me cut to the chase. Obviously, it seems to me to be a no-brainer that we're going to opt out of the regionalization, that there's simply no downside to doing so, so you should be sending a letter as soon as possible to do so. And I also think we should be not... So I also think we should not be sending in the strength and needs tool as well. That should be a corollary with our opt-out, there's no need to send in the strength and needs tool. But I also want to... I also want to make sure in your opt-out notice that you put in language to reserve all of our rights to oppose any other forms of regionalization that could be tied to this regulation. Unfortunately, the lang... Like Ms. Chang said, everyone, I, I need to finish our meeting, and it's difficult to pause, whether you're for or against what I'm saying, so please let me try to finish. So trust me, we'll miss something. So because the revised regulation is still not what, obviously, we would have wanted, I think the preservation of our rights and remedies in our opt-out notice is important. So the, this next step in my mind at this time is we should engage counsel, and I think we can do that now, right? So we can, you know, be ready if the opt-out is not insulating us from, you know, every possible regionalization. And I just want to make sure, because I'm sure you have attorneys in mind with the experience in this area, but for me, I'd want our counsel to be someone with experience dealing directly with state ed, someone with experience navigating the kind of politics here, and experience with complex litigation, which is what this would be. So I also want to have our counsel be our counsel, so we can be the one driving the strategy and not ceding that to others. So that counsel can advise us and protect us in the event state ed, obviously, were to mandate anything related to reorganization, that conflicts with us, that conflicts with what I called the tenants earlier. But they, they really also have the ability to give us advice on this issue generally. So I think we should look into that sooner than later, and I also want to, you know, authorize you today, if possible, to do that. So to keep it simple, let's not complete the strength and needs tool, which we haven't. We will send a comprehensive opt-out letter, preserving our rights, and we'll look into counsel that we can consult with and utilize if we're ever confronted with any issue. And I think we can do this through a resolution tonight, that would be my preference. Let's us sort of, you know, put this issue and... I'm going to say it.
Are you done?
Yeah, I think I'm done.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Greco. Okay. Just to echo what Mr. Greco had mentioned, to have our own counsel to represent us, to strategize, you know, what's best for our district, and then, and again, this is spending taxpayers' money for the litig, for potential lawsuit, right? So we want to be able to find something that, that the council that will fully represent us, and, Dr. Rogers, so please, you know, let us know. And I don't know if other board members have any, you know, okay, Ms.?
So yeah, so I, I think Brian's three operating points are important, and in that order, right, that we should be sending our opt-out notice preserving our rights for future litigation. I also think, in particular, I'd like us, when we're choosing counsel, I think Brian's points are, are actually really important. I, I'd like a board rep, someone in leadership, either you or your designee, to be part of that discussion, in terms of making sure that we're verifying that the attorney is representing our interests and we're not getting caught up in anybody else's lawsuit, because I want us to be the only client that the counsel is focused on, and I want to make sure that we do enough diligence to get somebody who's skilled in complex litigation and state ed, so that it's important that, I think, we have multiple people in that room making that decision. So that's just something I'd like to see in our resolution, and I, if it's possible, I'd like to get those approved tonight.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Okay, so, so if no one else has any questions for Dr. Rogers regarding regionalization, we do have resolutions prepared already, so I am, just bear with me, I am going to read every single word on the resolution, and then I am going to, and have the board to approve this, okay? So Resolution 1, opting out of the regionalization process and plan. Whereas the New York State Board of Regents adopted by emergency regulation, Section 124, enacting a regionalization plan process, whereas on... Whereas on December 9, 2024, the Board of Regents adopted a new subsection 2.8 of Section 124 entitled "Nonparticipation," which provides that a school district may elect not to participate in the development of a regionalization plan if it so elects. The superintendent of a school district, after consultation with their board, shall communicate the district's election in writing to the department's Office of Education Policy. Whereas the deadline for submission of such letter is January 15, 2025. Whereas during public discussion at the meeting of the Board of Regents, Regent T. List requested clarification on whether such letters would exempt school districts solely from the regionalization planning process or from planning, from plan implementation as well. Whereas the Assistant Commissioner confirmed for the record that such letter would exempt school districts from both regionalization plan development and regionalization plan implementation, and further that the department may be held legally accountable for courts, for statement, for statements made to the public. Whereas the Deputy Commissioner further stated for the record that the State Education Department would not approve any regionalization plan that included any initiative not agreed to an affected school district. Whereas the superintendent has consulted with the Board of Education as required by Section 124-2.8 in public session on December 9, 2024. Bid it therefore resolved that the Siasa Central School District Board of Education elects not to participate in the regionalization plan. Bid it further resolved that the Siasa Central School District will therefore not submit strengths and needs tool to the State Education Department. Bid it finally resolved that, at his earliest opportunity, the superintendent will transmit a letter to the Commissioner of Education expressing Siasa's election not to participate in the regionalization planning process or plan itself. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falcone. Are there any questions? Mr. Ostrick?
My only question is whether or not, after our finally resolved, that we need to reserve our rights for any future litigation in the resolution, or if it's implied.
There will be a separate resolution for that.
In terms of submitting the letter, whether or not the letter, no, I know there's, I know there's that. What I'm saying is that the resolution that we're authorizing the superintendent to send a letter, that the letter needs to also include that we're reserving our rights.
Just bear with us, we're changing the verbiage of the resolution before the vote, before the board votes on it.
Can you please not do that while we're in the middle of a meeting?
In addition to what was read earlier, there's going to be another sentence, and that is going to read, "Bid it further resolved that the Siasa Central School District will reserve its right, its rights to oppose any future regionalization..." Okay? "Regionalization initiatives."
Mr. Ostrick, I think you meant that the letter will include the language I spoke about earlier about reserving all rights and remedies with respect to regionalization.
Same. Same.
All right. That's good, right? Okay. Ms. Falcone?
So I agree with Jack, there's no downside to putting the preservation of our legal rights in the letter, but do we want to specify that we will preserve the rights if our local authority is stopped or our resources are being shared? You know, put that specific wording in it, instead of just saying opposing regionalization? To add, okay?
I think there's, I think there's multiple things that we could litigate on that would affect our autonomy. I don't want to say only shared resources or only this. I don't want, I wanted to make sure we reserve the right to litigate if our, if our autonomy is affected, or if regional, for whatever it is. I don't want to limit it by listing it, so maybe a little bit more vague is...
Mr. Greco?
Why are we not just saying that you're going to transmit a letter to the Commissioner of Education expressing Siasa's election not to participate in the regionalization planning process or plan itself, and reserve all of our rights and remedies with respect to that decision? Something like that.
Okay. Do you want me to read that, the last part? Okay. Okay. I'm going to read the last sentence again. So bid it further be resolved, Siasa Central School District will reserve all the rights to, plus remedies with respect to the decision. Okay. All right. And then, so, so that's going to be Resolution One. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falcone, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. We are going to move on to our resolution number two, so I do need the audience to cooperate, so we can get this done as soon as possible. Okay. Resolution number two, and that's to commence legal action in the event that regionalization plan includes Siasa against its will. Whereas the New York State Board of Regents adopted by emergency regulation Section 124 enacting a regionalization planning process. Whereas on December 9, 2024, the Board of Regents adopted a new subsection 2.8 of the Section 124 entitled "Nonparticipation," which provides that a school district may elect not to participate in the development of a regionalization plan. Whereas the Siasa Board of Education has elected not to participate. Whereas the State Education Department, in its frequently asked questions document regarding the regionalization plan, stated, "The regional plans will only include activities that individual school districts consent or agree to pursue and implement in their local context. A school district cannot be identified against their will as a participant in any particular activities listed in the regional plan. No individual school district is required to commit their local resources without their agreement or consent." Whereas the Siasa Central School District has repeatedly indicated it will oppose any attempt to diminish its local control, to redirect local resources, or to require the Siasa, the Siasa Central School District to participate in any, in a regionalization plan, or any of its activities in convention to the above exerted guidance from the New York State FAQ concerning regionalization. Bid it further, bid it therefore resolved that the Siasa School District will commence legal action to preserve its local control in the event that it's required against its will to participate in any activity listed in the regional plan. Okay? Go ahead.
For just the last three words, it's against its will to participate in any activity listed in any regionalization plan. So just the...
So the last sentence is going to be, to read, "Bid it therefore resolved that the Siasa Central School District will commence legal action to preserve its local control in the event that it's required against its will to participate in any activity listed in any regionalization, regionalization plan." Okay? All right. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Eberson, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? We don't have any legislative items, and we are going to move to our first discussion item, which is the selection of NASO BOSIS Budget Review Committee. And the Budget Committee, the BOSIS Budget Committee, the virtual orientation is going to take place on Wednesday, December 11. And then the in-person specific budget reviews will take place on Thursday, January 16, and January, and Thursday, February 6. And those two meetings are going to be in person. Can I have a volunteer to do the budget? Dr. Park, thank you so much. And in the event that Dr. Park cannot make any of these dates, can I have an alternate person? Okay. Mr. Greco, thank you so much.
As a backup.
As a backup, yes, as a backup person. Okay. And Ms. Koshyer, thank you so much as a backup person. A second backup, okay. Oh, there are only two in-person meetings, so, thank you so much. Okay. So that's going to end our discussion items, and there is no unfinished business, and we are going to move to our new business. And 11A is the approval of staff changes. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falcone. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11B is the approval of stipends and hourly rates, 2024-2025. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11C is the appointment of school district purchasing agent and assistant purchasing agents. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falcone, seconded by Mr. Ostrick. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11D is the appointment of special counsel. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11E is the approval of stipend for Director of Instructional and Administrative Technology. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11F is the approval of a memorandum of agreement. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falcone. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11G is the authorization to modify agreement for employee-paid access major medical plan. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 12A is the approval of the 2025-2026 school calendar. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? Mr. Greco?
I feel like before I sat up here, I was searching the website for next year's calendar constantly. When will the calendar, assuming we vote to approve it today, be posted online?
We'll post it tomorrow, and it's already available online because it's incorporated in the agenda, but it will be posted on the district website where the calendars are, where people would actually go to look for it tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11B is the first reading of new policy 1741, homeschool students, revised policy 1900, parent and family engagement, revised policy 9550, expression of breast milk in the workplace. The second reading of stated policies will be voted on during the January 6, 2025 board meeting. Said policies will be available for inspection on the district website. 12C and 12D can be taken together. They are the approval of the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education Recommendations. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13A is the authorization of service contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falcone, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13B is the authorization for special education and/or nursing contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13C is the authorization for contracts for federal Part B funds. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falcone, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13D is the approval of intermunicipal agreement. Levitown School District Girls Wrestling Team. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13E is the rejection of proposals for universal pre-kindergarten program for 2025-2026 school year. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13F is the award of bid, SG Raydown mitigation, intricate tech solutions. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13G is the authorization for piggybacking Hewlett-Woodmere Union Free School District, J.G. Borderwick and Associates. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falcone, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13H, H, is the authorization to participate in cooperative Amnia WW Grenjer. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Eberson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13I is the approval of student club charters, 2024-2025. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13J is the acceptance of donation of funds and appropriation of funds. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in, Mr. Ostrick?
Can we get a shout-out for our librarians?
Thank you. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13K is the disposal of broken surplus and/or obsolete equipment, supplies and brooks, and books. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falcone. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now, we are going to move to audience to the public, and please just bear with me, I would have to read the procedures to the public before we can start the audience to the public. The board values community input and provides opportunities to offer that input via email or in person. Persons who wish to speak during audience to the public must register online to speak in events of the meeting by 5:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting. A link to the pre-registration form will be made available on the homepage on the district website, one week before the meeting. Persons wishing to address the board in person during audience to the public must conform to the procedures adopted by the board. Speakers' remarks must conform to the following. One, all speakers must and observers are required to conduct themselves in a respectful and civil manner in accordance with rules set by the board. Two, speakers must address the board only, not members of the audience or the audience as a whole. Three, speakers must limit their comments to issues concerning Siasa's school district operations, school district affairs, or board, or board policy. Four, because of rights protected by state and federal law, no speaker may speak about an individual student or staff member, nor will the board or administration entertain questions in public regarding collective bargaining, negotiations, personnel matters, student matters, or legal matters. Five, no speaker may speak about decision involving specific personnel or specific student. If a speaker wishes to address the board concerning specific personnel or specific students, the speaker may write to the board. Six, speakers may not use epithets, slurs, personal abuse, lewd and obscene speech, profanity, libelous speech, threats, and fighting words, or gestures. Any person who violates the rule above will immediately forfeit the balance of their time addressing the board. To be recognized to speak, persons must register with their full name and address, and attest that they will comply with the rules stated above. In addition, only residents of the Siasa Central School District are permitted to address the board. the board. The board will not permit polling of the board members by speakers. After every resident wishing to speak who had an opportunity to do so, the board and our administration may respond to residents' questions or comments. No resident will be permitted to address the board more than once per meeting. No one may record another member of the public in a manner that is disruptive or confrontational. And last, considering that the number of people signing up to speak, each resident will now have three minutes to address the board, which may extended or reduced at the discretion of the chair for good use. And I will be calling the residents who wish to speak.